I mentioned, you know, notice placement of residents and minimal displacement of businesses. For a reason why the Thorstad site was chosen. Uh, that the uh, city investment with TIF could likely be recouped within a 10 year period. And then as well as the location, it's adjacent to a school and a park, um, which is also ideal. Um, for developing a neighborhood. Uh, again, this is not where staff started with recommendations, but um. Uh, it's, it is where we are proposing to end up with that recommendation. So with that, uh, happy to, uh, take any questions, um, or go over any of, uh. The maps that I shared or anything else you'd like to, to ask or talk about.
All right. Uh, thanks Jeff for your questions. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks Jeff, uh, appreciate it. Um, yeah, I have questions on the, uh, future. Uh, low stress bike network, uh, looked really great and kind of comprehensive. Um, wondering that you said you might be able to go through a little bit more detail though. Kind of how, how that was determined and what, what would get us to that?
Sure, let me, um. So again, I, as I mentioned before, uh, the MPO put this data together. Um, but likely, you know, to get to, hopefully you're seeing the, this PDF with the strategies and recommendations. Um, it likely to, to help us get to that future, uh, low stress, uh, network. Um, we've got all of these, uh, recommendations, uh. Under strategy five of expanding and improving the pedestrian and bicycle networks to enable safe and convenient active transportation. So again, it goes back to evaluating and proactively filling those gaps in the pedestrian and bicycle network. So the sidewalk, uh, network as well as, um. Filling gaps in, in the bicycle network, whether it's on the street or off street. So like the Cannonball Trail extension would be one example of that. Um, as well as, uh, the proposed, um, Buick Street extension. Um, developing a, a north-south pedestrian bicycle route. Uh, to get folks, uh, from South Madison into the neighborhoods, North of Winger Creek. Uh, enabling, um, bicycle safety improvements, uh, into new and reconstructed streets. So we have the streets that I showed in that first map, uh, those would be new, new neighborhood streets. But then there's also, uh, future, um. Street improvements, uh, reconstruction of streets. So Park Street from, um. The rail line, uh, north, uh, is slated to occur in the next few years here. That would be one example of that. Um. Mentioned the Cannonball Path. Um. Yeah, so e- essentially as far as the, the, um. Recommendations in the South Madison plan to help get us to that future low stress network are contained here. And then as well in the strategy three of the Park Street. Um. Section of the implementation, and this just deals with, um, recommendations on Park Street, obviously. Um. And then, you know, transportation engineering is, is always working on, um, making improvements, uh, along. You know, the Park Street quarter, there's been some improvements already, uh, at Madison College, uh, with pedestrian crossings. As well as, uh, some work, um, kind of in the middle section of Park Street here with some rapid flashing beacons, that sort of thing. Um, not sure if I got at what you were going for Alder Foster.
Well, I guess I'm trying to, you know, early on you described this as really wanting to be an action plan. And kind of, you know, be in specifics, I guess. And maybe it's even more of a question for like traffic engineering or engineering, but. I guess how does, how does what's shown here and the information in those tables, because most of those actions were, were kind of pretty broad in generic. I mean, there were a couple of specific ones for things that are like basically in progress, but then. I feel like most of what we're looking at turning it all nice and green. Was like, I guess I'm not understanding how we get there and how, how, if we adopt this plan. You know, which is supposed to give direction to staff to implement it. Like what? I, I, I guess I'm trying to set realistic expectations, number one, like for myself and for the community and. And also does the staff feel like they have the mandate and the support to actually make this happen? Because, you know, I think just, you know, we al- we always try and make improvements when projects come up. When we're, you know, it's time to reconstruct the street. I mean, we've been doing great work at that for, for decades. But we also know that this part of the cities doesn't have. For being as close as it is to so many jobs downtown, this should be a super bikeable neighborhood and it, it hasn't gotten there. So I guess I'm trying to, I want to make sure that we're kind of being honest with ourselves. And if we want to push ourselves to really fulfill this promise, what, you know, do we, do we have enough detail to make that happen?
So I, I mean, it looks like Tom wants to chime in. I'll say we've coordinated with TE staff on these recommendations to make sure they're comfortable with. Uh, what is in there as far as, you know, being able to program some of these improvements into their budgets and, and make them happen. So I'll, uh, see if Tom has something else he wants to add.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, yeah, I, I think, um. We are very cognizant of, of the gaps in our network and we're trying to, rather than just, uh. Um, address them when some, when it comes up, we would like to proactively address them. Um, I think the typology of Park Street is still in question and will be part of our completed green streets. But it's recognized as a high stress corridor. And why can't, um, why can't we perhaps change that? Now, uh, Renee has done work with the neighborhoods and is working on a, a parallel corridor to the east. Um, but I think it's a legitimate question to say what could be accomplished, you know, on Park Street. And I think that would probably take, uh, a quarter or so, you know, that could be associated with the north-south BRT. Um, I don't, I don't think we can, I think it's a high desire of staff, um, to make Park Street more bikeable. Um, I don't know if dictating a solution right here is perhaps the right thing to do. Because, you know, that could, Park Street could look, uh, it could have three different.
Yeah, I, I mean, I appreciate that for sure. And I mean, perhaps we should include a recommendation to, to include that in a more detailed corridor study. Um, I think my focus isn't even necessarily on the question of Park Street with, with my questions, but I'm just, you know, seeing. Changes to Bell Street or Badger Road or like, I mean, all kinds of streets in here that I think would be really welcome improvements. I, I guess just wanting to make sure that, you know, your, I guess your team, Tom, has. What it needs to, to, to fulfill that as well, that we have actual like ideas or commitments to, to turn, yeah, Badger Road, for example, like. We, we, we have a good idea of how we can turn that green and by, if we adopt this. Plan, will that be enough support for you and your team to, to make that happen? I guess is where I'm, maybe more where I'm going. It's like Renee has got her hand up.
Go ahead Renee.
Yeah, so I just want to jump in. Definitely, we've been working with Jeff and have participated in, in the meetings, um. In, during this process and I feel like this has really helped with sort of. Figuring out where to start on a lot of connection issues that exist, although some of these are pretty big issues and I wouldn't say that. We're ready to say this is the design, but we're definitely starting to work on these and that this plan helps. Give us that roadmap and kind of understand where future connections are going to be so that we can be strategic in. Making our investments and knowing that they're going to lead to sort of longer facilities or better connections as well. So I do think that although this doesn't say exactly what everything is going to look like, that it's. Getting us in the right direction of building out that connectivity that is missing in the south side.
That's, that's great to hear. Um, maybe one specific question separate from, from Park Street is the section of Badger Road. Around Park, it looks like it's still shown as kind of high stress even in the, in the future. Um, I'm imagining there were plenty of conversations around that if it's still showing up as red and orange. But I'm just thinking about all the plans that CDA has for Villager Mall, et cetera. Seems like there may be an opportunity to, to push ourselves to try and find out a way to make a low stress connection there. Just like such a critical, um, connector out. Any, anything to share on that one?
I, I think as redevelopment occurs and we get some clarification on, um. If the transfer point is going to remain or go, I think once we have more information on that, I think. You know, we could figure out what could be done with that intersection. I think having the transfer point there maybe plays a big role into why it's shown as a moderate stress right now. Um. So I, I guess that would be my answer on that. I don't know, Tom?
Well, um, east of Park Street, Renee will probably present some ideas for a tech there. It would be nice to have a, a stronger connection to that overpass right along where AMI is. And so we are looking at a lower cost based implement. Uh, west of, um, Park Street, I think, uh, what Jeff said is, is correct. It's a kind of understand, uh, what might be happening with the transfer point.
Um, and, and then I guess in the, in the same vein, so, you know, South, South Park Street itself as a corridor, obviously, you know, sort of. More work needs to be done. I appreciate, um, showing that there, there may be opportunities for us to improve that. It also, you know, really serves as a, as a east-west barrier and really disrupts connectivity across it. Um, you know, I, there, there's no additional signalized cross known, um, kind of looks like from Buick all the way up to the creek. So, you know, in, in those areas, it looks like there's a lot of green lines, but there's no actual supportive way to get across the street either for pedestrians or. Or people on bikes, um. Is there any opportunity to, to look closer at that and potentially recommend some additional signalized crossings or? Other features to, because I, I'm not seeing that, I guess, on this.
Maybe I'll, I'll make a, a statement. I, um, with the BRT, we will want signals at stations, at every station. Um, we actually have to, because it is a state route, we do have to get permission from the DOT. So I, there may be things that, uh, Jeff's playing group also adds to that, but, uh. We as part of the BRT, north-south BRT project, I will have probably recommendations.
I think, I guess I can point out one, th- this one right here, um, I believe it's in the Thorstad concept. It either maybe North Avenue or this one, but trying to get a pedestrian connection to Bell Street across Park Street. There's that space between the water utility lot and the strip mall just to the north of it. Um, we, I believe in the concept plan, we show a pedestrian connection going through there. Whether or not that'll be, uh, uh, I, I doubt it'll be a controlled intersection, but maybe some rapid flashing beacons. But again, I, I think there, unfortunately, there's just a lot of unknowns around Park Street and BRT. Um. To be, to be able to definitively say this is the solution. Um. But I think the goal is definitely to make improvements where we can. And, and like Tom mentioned, you know, future study, uh, could be, could be done and, and, you know, if, if.
Yeah, I, I, I totally get the, the challenges and all that. I, I'm just, I think if we're going to adopt a plan that shows this is what we want in the future and what we're working towards, if we. Show that we're okay with not having those, I feel like we're maybe selling ourselves short, um, so. Uh, I, I had, I guess a couple of questions on the, or maybe I guess a comment on the Thorstad site, um.
Sure.
You said you, you raised, so, um, and I think we shared a little bit at the, the last time it came, some of the, the surprise around the lower density. There, um, you know, I, I was able to, to get some additional information from staff. So that was really helpful, you know, better understand kind of where that came from. Um, I think I'm still feeling left with from a, especially from a transportation policy perspective. Um. I, I think we really need to, um. We need to, we need to show something that's really consistent with how we're going to be implementing TOD, our Transit Oriented Development Plans. Which I mean largely are around supporting and encouraging, maybe even requiring higher density, uh, adjacent to those high capacity transit stops. Um. I think, I think what's, what seems to be really standing out for me in this conversation is. Conflation of two, two things that I think are actually different, but have kind of become one. So, and it's, I, I saw it a few times in the presentation, but there's this, there's this discussion about. Home ownership versus, versus rentals, which I find very compelling. Like I think the data that, that shows about. The, the limited opportunities for homeownership in this neighborhood, to me that makes a ton of sense and I'm fully supportive of that. But then it seems to be like on the same slide, it's showing percentages of single family versus multifamily. And I, I can, I can understand why those things maybe are a bit of a stand-in for each other and why, why we've perhaps conflated. Homeownership with single family detached billing form. Um, you know, certainly has, has been that way historically, you know, a lot of, a lot or most of the homeownership opportunities are for. Single family detached homes. Um. But I think the reality is we, we have to move past that thinking and we have to really start to think about. And understand homeownership opportunities within other billing forms, including multi-family. Um, so I guess in general, I, I feel like. While I appreciate sort of, you know, why, why this showed up the way it is, when I looked at those comments that, that you shared on the one slide. To me, the focus really seemed to be around opportunities for homeownership and especially around affordable housing. And, you know, if this is going to, if this is going to require significant public investment, which it will, if we're going to do this. And do it to in- increase homeownership, let alone wealth building. You know, if we have $10 million to invest in this or $20 million to invest in this. We're going to be able to provide a certain number of homes if they're single family detached homes and lots. And we can provide many more affordable homes for folks and homeownership opportunities for folks subsidized. If we, if we used a more efficient multifamily form, and there's a lot of different forms to choose from, so. I guess I, I'm still feeling like, from a transportation policy perspective, I'd really like to, uh, suggest that this, that, that we look at increasing the density here. And that that can very much be consistent with the goals of increased homeownership. And, uh, in fact, I think that's probably a better way to meet the goals of anti-gentrification displacement that were really essential to this work. And I really fear that if we, if we build a bunch of single family homes here, and especially if they're done in the, in the vein of wealth building. We will maybe accomplish that in the short term and then those, those parcels are going to turn over. And we will absolutely be inviting gentrification in. So, um, I guess those are my comments on it at this time.
All right. Thank you, Alder Foster. Uh, Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to play off of that. Um, first of all, thanks for laying out the thinking behind. Um, the lower density and everything, obviously that caught some of us off guard and clearly it was a pivot for staff too, so, um, thank you. Um, it makes more sense to me now. I've also dug in a little bit in the meantime. So I had some of the same thoughts as Alder Foster. Um, I guess some questions playing off of that is, um. If, um, the thinking is that we do need to go lower density for various reasons. Um, and that sort of goes against, you know, what was laid out in the comp plan in order just to get. You know, we're, we're charged with making sure that we can get as much housing near. Um, high quality transit as we can. So is there any thinking at the staff level about? Um, if we, if we move forward here with this and then see the same sort of thing happen at other sites? Or, or density gets better down at other sites, um, how much harder it is going to be for us to. To see the density that we need in the right locations?
Yeah, I mean, that's a valid, valid comment, valid question. Um, yeah, I think. I don't want to say this one's, you know, th- this one will set a precedent if it, if it goes through like this. Um. I, you know, where we are, uh, planning is, we'll be working on a TOD. Um, planning effort coming up, uh, in the next year, I believe. Uh, to make recommendations on how to, to get more density around, uh, the transit corridors. Um, I would think within there, uh, that could be addressed. Um, and as I mentioned before, you know, the mix of units here can switch around, the placement of units we could. You know, show, instead of putting the townhomes closer to the school, they could shift closer to Badger Road and. Uh, the single family could shift closer to the school where you get more density along Park Street. I know it's not multifamily density levels. Um, you know, another thing I wanted to mention too, uh, is we do talk in the housing chapter about using the land trust model. You know, Alder Foster mentioned, um, you know, if these single family lots are built, that's going to, um. Encourage gentrification and, and prices will go up and that sort of thing. Uh, one, one possible way around that would be using a, a land trust, uh, model in this. But, you know, as far as, you know, how, how we get that density, I think, I. A lot of that will be, uh, hopefully ironed out in that TOD study that, or planning effort that will be going on in the future. Um, and again, I just want to reiterate, you know, the mix here is. Is, you know, movable, uh, it, it's flexible. Um. This is more of a starting point and as the details get ironed out, um, that's kind of when it gets, you know, the, the ratios get set here.
Yeah, if I could just kind of add to that, um, I think part of what we're trying to do here is show that we can. Uh, provide this mix of housing. Uh, it's not exactly how we will provide the housing. Uh, we also have to kind of set the expectation in the plan, uh, that there's a need for more owner occupied housing. Uh, for more housing choice than exists in the area, which is, you know, heavily weighted right now to multifamily housing. And where there isn't really an, uh, appetite within the planning area for more multifamily housing. Uh, so I think one of the things that you're seeing in the Thorstad focus area is the staff team's attempt to show that we can provide. Uh, cottage homes, fee simple homes, uh, townhouses, uh, within the planning area to address the overwhelming. Uh, interest that the community has shared with us in more of that housing, uh, within South Madison. It's not just the owner occupancy question, it's the type of housing. Uh, and so I think, you know, the, the efforts that staff has gone to, to illustrate that it can be done. Is really just that, uh, to establish the expectation and show at like kind of a 10,000 foot view that it is in fact possible. Uh, the exact size of lots, uh, will vary, uh, or can vary. Uh, that the number of cottage homes, the number of fee simple lots, for example, uh, Jeff indicated during his presentation. That, uh, the lots that you see, uh, in C, uh, where you have basic kind of fee simple lots, those are 4,000 square foot lots, 40 foot wide lots. Uh, we have, uh, new lots being developed on the edges of the city that are 30 feet wide. Uh, that's a, a, a goodly jump in density if you go from 40 to 30. If you do 30 foot wide lots, 3,000 square foot lots, you're talking about a density of 14 and a half units an acre, which is significant, significantly denser. Than the density of your typical single family subdivision. So there is a, a way potentially. To do this in a more urban, less suburban, uh, denser fashion. Uh, that I think will, uh, address some of the concerns that we're hearing and, and, you know, again emphasizing a point that Jeff made earlier. We had a lot more density shown here. I mean, we kind of went with, you know, our bread and butter approach to how this area should develop. With a regional mixed use, land use recommendation in the comprehensive plan. And that was largely batted back at us by the community. Uh, and so we're trying to, to hear them as well with the, the concept that you're seeing. And I'd also point out too, that we have, uh, you know, relatively mid moderate dense buildings along Park Street. Uh, we're not necessarily building single family homes right up to the Park Street frontage. Uh, y- you have mixed use, you have median residential buildings along most of that frontage. Uh, including right where the Thorstad buildings are. Uh, and those are, you know, recommended to be up to five story buildings. Uh, so this, there's going to be an opportunity to see some relatively dense development occur right along Park Street. That will actually in many ways sort of facilitate that lower density development that's going to happen one, you know, tier in west of Park Street. Um, so it, it, it isn't all low density, although we, we certainly acknowledge what we've heard so far that it is. Uh, much less density than perhaps, uh, some folks, including some folks, uh, on this body, uh, would have expected to see.
Thanks. That was helpful. Um, just one more follow-up, I guess. Um. I guess I still have two concerns that I think Alder Foster touched on. One is this conflation of. Um, low density, single family versus ownership. I think. Uh, it's probably worth being more clear that if the goal is homeownership, that. That doesn't just mean low density, single family, I think. Um, and obviously the flexibility is in here, but I don't know if. There seems to be some confusion about that point still. And then secondly, um. I guess this idea of, um. This, this plan being driven by the notion of, of not facilitating displacement. When we know that, I think we've heard that there's already displacement happening here. Um. Do housing folks tell you that this is a solution? Like, are we just going to do this in the name of, of, of halting displacement and then? Not have the intended consequences in any way? I mean, what, do we need to layer on other policies to, you know, to make sure that that's happening?
But the, the city, you know, has very few tools in the toolbox to prevent displacement and gentrification. I mean, essentially land banking, um, and, and doing essentially our own, RFPing our own projects. Um, you know, in the plan, in the housing chapter, we do talk about, um, providing some additional city programs to help with. Uh, first time homeownership or, uh, purchasing homes or, you know, renovating houses to keep people in and that sort of thing. Um, but e- essentially, you know, the, the tools that the city has. The, the biggest one we have is, is through land banking and, and RFPing our own projects. Um, and a lot of that will be done through TIF, but, you know, w- we are looking at it as a layered approach. I mean, we've, cities already been land banking, the plan has, has those other recommendations in the housing chapter.
Uh, and, and again, to, to kind of, uh, backfill, you're, you're seeing different opportunities, uh, in the Thorstad focus area. Uh, I, I think maybe we're, we're focusing perhaps a bit more than maybe we should on just the fee simple lots. Uh, I mean, I think the inclusion of cottage homes, uh, that's probably in something that would be. Kind of in a condominium form of ownership, uh, where there's common elements and then, you know, individual owner occupied units. Uh, and then you have, uh, townhouses and row houses that, you know, customarily are, are brought to market in a condominium form of ownership. They don't have to be, you can do them in, in a fee simple, uh, zero lot line arrangement. Uh, but there's probably even in that circumstance going to be, you know, a shared ownership of common spaces. Uh, which has an affordability, uh, challenge, you know, attended to it. Uh, when you have, uh, things that are, uh, that have common maintenance, uh, regardless of the building form. Uh, there are costs involved with that. Uh, they can vary pretty widely, uh, but they add on, uh, top of what people are paying in their mortgage. They're paying, you know, typically monthly assessments, uh, for some of those things. Uh, and so again, it's, it's kind of at this point trying to illustrate that we can do a number of different things to meet the expectations. Uh, that we're hearing from the community, uh, that we can do them in, uh, a, a relatively dense way because. That we can do them in a relatively dense way because I think we're certainly hearing that. And, and recognizing that, you know, planning for it is really the first step. Implementing it is going to be a much, much greater challenge. And it's going to involve, as Jeff has pointed out, and as the plan makes relatively clear, it's going to require a lot of public investment, direct and indirect. And, and, you know, one of the things that we, we probably want to focus on in terms of the different types of housing is we're certainly hearing the comments about there are different ways to, to have owner occupancy to create, you know, generational wealth, community wealth building, things like that. I don't think at this point we want to preclude anything from the plan because we have a lot of folks who are looking for those opportunities. I don't think we want to preclude anybody from those opportunities, at least not at this level within the plan.
Thanks. Just two quick points on, on some of that. I mean, I agree on not precluding anything, I think probably when it comes to density. If the market says there's not market for density, that ought to dictate that, but that not probably shouldn't be limited here. And then yeah, clearly we need a tool for understanding equitable TOD. So it's good to hear that that's coming down the pike eventually. And I think that that's going to be critical for understanding what this needs to look like because clearly we haven't wrapped our head around that completely. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. A bit of a follow up, I think, on the discussion that Chris initiated. When I, in, in this, you know, stray is a bit out of transportation and into the land use area, which is not my area of expertise, so please bear with me. But during the, during your community, what I have noticed in this neighborhood, as I have noticed in many neighborhoods around Madison, is that is the purchase up of relatively inexpensive one or two family dwellings by national, by speculators, you know, let's call them what it is, you know, by, by real estate firms that are doing massive buy ups. So what would essentially have the conversion of owner occupied homes into rental units. And that certainly occurred in this neighborhood. So when the neighborhood was talking about it, and when you talk about in your stats, single family housing, you know, and owner occupied housing, to what extent did you take that into account? To what extent was that a part of the discussion in the planning process with the neighborhood, the fact that, oh, this block has gone from owner occupied to rental units and this is what this is doing to the neighborhood?
I'd, I'd say just about every public meeting that we held on this project, we heard from the community that so and so is coming in and buying up single family homes and switching them over to rental and what can you do to stop it and this and that? And when we look at the data, you know, unfortunately, we didn't have, we don't have good data for the town, but when we look at the data for City of Madison properties, we do see, looking at some of these single family residential neighborhoods, we can see that, you know, there's more and more going from owner occupied to rental. So, but as I mentioned, you know, the city doesn't have a very good tool or tools to be able to combat that from happening. We can't just go in and kindly say, please stop buying these homes and converting them to rentals. But like I said, just about every public meeting we had, we heard that from, from the community.
Okay. Well, I'm going to push back on the tools issue a little bit. And, and, and to acknowledge that first, that this is hardly an issue limited to Madison or Dane County. Although we may feel some particular pressure because of our growth, the rate of growth of our population and the attractiveness of the market to investors. But I think of, for example, Tenny Lappam neighborhood, which, where we had many properties that were converted back from rental units, they were converted into rental units in the sixties and converted back into owner occupied or some kind of combo of owner occupied slash rental. Specifically because those areas were among the first designated NIDA investment areas for first time home buyers, you know, programs for first time home buyers and also renovation grants. And I found, you know, having been one of the people who did that, frankly, I found the city's programs to be quite unwieldy and NIDA to not be unwieldy. And so I, I just wonder when, when you're doing your counts, to what extent, if you were to count those neighborhoods, say Bram's Edition, as areas that you can convert back to single family fee simple ownership, to what extent is that satisfying the need and the desire, the understandable desire for people to be able to build equity in their own properties?
You know, like I said, we don't have the full data picture because the different data sets, the town data really doesn't exist and then we only have the city. But when we look at what has been converted for city lots, we're talking dozens, not hundreds. Another thing that we heard was when people do try to buy these homes, they're being outbid by these folks who are, are converting them. So the difficulty will also be being able to have a willing seller, you know, the, 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 there's essentially one large firm that are buying up these homes. And you can tell by the doors are orange. That's about what I'll say, but I don't want to name the name, but thus far, they have not been willing to sell. In, in fact, they routinely approach owners and say, so you're ready to sell to me, you know, kind of almost bullying people into selling their homes to them. So, you know, the difficulty will to convert them back will be purchasing of them back and, and converting them. But again, you know, I think if we could do, say, Thorstad plus conversions, I think you could maybe say we're making a meaningful contribution to single family homeownership. But again, looking at the city lots that we have the data on, we're talking a dozen or two homes. You know, 12 to 24 homes that could potentially be reconverted into single family.
We're, we're going to have some limited tools. I mean, Tenny Lappam is an interesting case study. You know, and, and some of those student oriented rental neighborhoods of previous generations, much less so now. That's been, you know, that sort of conversion went out of favor in the eighties after it was kind of left unchecked through the sixties and even back into the fifties. But, you know, the family definition in the zoning code, which sets the number of unrelated individuals that can share a dwelling unit, its origins go back to trying to reduce the attractiveness of those low density wood frame neighborhoods for rental housing. And that even carried through into our new zoning code. I would note like for Bram's Edition, that, you know, one of the examples that you noted, that was actually one of the byproducts of the 2005 South Madison Neighborhood Plan, which part of this is an update to was to reduce the zoning intensity, particularly east of Park Street to lessen some of the pressure in those areas. We used to have a lot of two family zoning over there. That was actually recommended for that to be changed to single family to discourage the further conversion of single family homes into two family dwellings. And then there were similar areas that were more densely zoned that were conversely more or less dense, less intensely zoned. Yeah, I think I said that right. With the 2013 remap of the city to reflect the zoning code, a lot of the zoning changes that occurred then were done to implement plan recommendations like in that 2005 South Madison Neighborhood Plan. But then, you know, another thing that happened with Tenny Lappam was the small cap TIF program, which unfortunately didn't see broad success. I think you referred to it as unwieldy. I think we can probably just leave it there. And, but it was, it was a difficult program to, to gain a lot of, you know, interest. There were a lot of expectations on the folks who sought those loans and it didn't see very broad acceptance in the market. But that was done to incentivize the, the conversion of those two and three unit or four unit buildings in Tenny Lappam into you know, one and two family homes like they might have originally been built at before their conversion under folks like Bill Kozak and, and the like who, you know, feathered their nest in the sixties and seventies, buying up a lot of houses and converting them into as many units as they could.
I'll also mention too, another solution that we looked at was where there were lots that were large enough to split and build an additional unit. Again, for the majority of the study area, you're looking at a handful, you know, five to 10 lots that, that could occur on outside of the Sunstrom Street area where, where early on, we presented a fourth focus area concept that showed just that, splitting those two acre plus lots into smaller, you know, these typical city type lot, four or 5,000 square foot lots. And as we did in the O5 plan, we ran into a brick wall, a neighborhood that said, no way. We're, this is absolutely unacceptable. We will not support this in the plan. And as we did in O5, it was decided to back off that concept and just put recommendations in the text for that neighborhood versus showing the concept plan, showing those single family residential lots. So, you know, we, we did look for other solutions before we arrived at this Thorstad concept.
Okay, I'm gonna, since this is the Transportation Board, I will leave my questions at that and ask them in a different venue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to follow up on a couple of points. Actually, that last one I think is an important one and if, if there's a belief that single family building form needs to be shown somewhere in here, I would, I would very much be in favor of going back and reconsidering showing that Sunstrom area. That, that makes a lot more sense to me. I mean, adding density to kind of oversized lots, that seemed like a much, much better place for adding some additional single family homes that would, I think, be consistent with our, our city goals. So I guess I would just put a plug in for reconsidering that. I, I know there was pushback from, from that specific neighborhood, but I think it's worth going back to. You know, if, if you look at the first sentence of this summary, I mean, it really lays it out there, this issue that I've been kind of driving home, which is it's, it's a mix of housing types, owner occupied, single family detached, owner occupied, single family attached and multifamily rental. I think that really continued, like that is encapsulated right in the, in the first sentence of this whole concept. And I think we really need to, to break those things apart. I heard from, from staff that we're not really wanting to or trying to preclude anything. But the reality is that this, this does. I mean, if we, if we adopt this, this precludes medium and higher density residential in every area that's shown as low residential. Like this is, this isn't just a concept. Yeah, there's flexibility in kind of the exact layout. But this would stop anyone, including ourselves from, from building something other than low residential there without going back and changing the plan. And so I, I, I think it's important to not fool ourselves by showing, you know, I don't know, 80% of that land area as low residential. We are precluding anything higher density than that in here until unless we change the plan. And I think it seems clear to, to me, I think certainly to staff, it should be clear to everybody. And I think you mentioned it, Jeff, this, this really isn't even a feasible concept in the market, right? And, and so it would require really significant city investment. So and if that's the case, which I would 100% support, what are we talking about? We're saying we're, so the, the city is going to invest to, to bring this sort of vision to pass, especially with a focus on affordability and homeownership opportunities. So why would we cut ourselves off with the needs and have higher land costs, higher infrastructure costs for fewer units rather than the opposite? If this is a site that we can control and we can make those investments, then we're going to be on the hook for putting those streets in for all the utility connections, for the actual construction. And we're going to have to subsidize all of that to get folks with lower income to be able to get into them, whether they're renting or owning. Why would we want to limit ourselves to say we can only build 100 of those units instead of 200 or 300 or 400? I mean, just like a, a for profit developer would not want to see this, right? They'd want to maximize how many units they could put there. If, if our goal is to get control of this as a city and to, and to accomplish the goal of providing more affordable housing for folks that are ideally in the neighborhood that want to have their first homeownership opportunity, I don't, I don't understand why we would say, well, we want 40 single family homes instead of 200 multifamily homes that could, that could fit that goal. So I, I guess it just, I think we need to be careful to say we're not precluding anything with this because I think we, I think we are.
All right. Thank you, Alder Foster. Are there any additional questions? Comments or discussion? All right. Seeing none, I would be looking for a motion. Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
I move a recommendation for approval with two two additional recommendations. One would be to increase the residential density on the Thorstad site. And in order to really take advantage of the BRT access and in support of our TOD goals. And the second is to take another look at the level of stress, three and four segments on the, on the bike map to see if there are additional opportunities to, to, to make those low stress in the future, including the South Park Street crossings.
Thank you. I was just writing as much of that down as I could. We have a motion, is there a second? Alder Furman, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Alder Foster, would you like to speak further to your motion?
I think I've shared everything already. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, see if I can get all of this. On the motion to recommend adopting the South Madison Plan as a supplement to the comprehensive plan and directing staff to implement the recommendations contained in the plan with the two additional recommendations of one, increasing the residential density on the Thorstad site in order to better take advantage of the BRT access. And two, to take another look at the levels three and four bike accommodations on the Ped Bike Map and, and including the Park Street crossings. Is that sound right, Alder Foster? All right. All those All right, all those in favor of adopting with those two recommendations? Please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. We'll then move on to Legisar six eight. Thank you. Thank you to all staff who presented and answered questions. All right, then we'll move on to Legisar six eight two nine four approving a, a TIP application projects prioritization.
All right, thank you, everyone. So I'm gonna just share my screen here quickly. All right. All right, so hopefully that looks right. My screen looks funny today. So I am here to talk to you about the Transportation Alternatives Program funding. One of the things that is required is that we have a ranked list to go with our applications. That is something that the Wisconsin DOT requires and needs the council approval for our applications. So this is just the very beginning of the process. Some of you are probably pretty familiar with this program, have been through this before. But I wanted to give you some highlights in case you didn't have a chance to click on some of the links and look at the information. So some of the things that are kind of important is this is not the largest funding program in the world. So you have to take that into account with your projects. There's actually only currently in the budget, seven million dollars in federal funds per year for the entire state. Now, the Greater Madison MPO, which I typed incorrectly with their old name, they do get a portion of those funds based on the population, but that also is not a huge amount of funds that they have to give out every year. WISDOT does say that the projects have to be for infrastructure, which is what we'll be primarily talking about. Three hundred thousand to a million. They don't do very many projects over a million. And they say that for consideration, it has to have some particular statewide benefit, just because obviously they don't have a lot of funds to give out. So in the last round, they averaged around five hundred thousand per project. They did have two projects over a million, but pretty limited. And then the amount that the city gets from these is sixty to eighty percent of the total project cost. All right, so these projects, although they're asking for applications now, these actually are not available generally to be funded until state fiscal year twenty twenty five, which is July first of twenty twenty four. But generally, these would be done in calendar years twenty five or twenty six. So these are out in the future a little bit. So that also needs to be considered with the applications. And then they have a very strict rule that you must have a project that you can start within four years and complete within six years. And as some of you may know, Wisconsin State statute no longer allows us to use eminent domain to purchase property. Any property that we purchase, they have to be a willing seller. And that is definitely a consideration in project selection as well, because that is something that can really hold a project up and make it difficult to meet the state timelines. And as mentioned, we're here today to start that prioritization process that is required. All right, so just a little bit of what we've gotten in the past. We have been pretty successful. We obviously are one of the larger cities in the state. We have a lot of bicycle and pedestrian activity, so that does help us rank very well. So we have gotten projects in the past. Last time, we received funding for the West Town Path extension through the Greater Madison MPO funding. And then through the statewide, we were lucky enough to also receive funding for West Main Street improvements. The previous solicitation, we got the Carver Path, which is just coming to completion. Mostly done finishing things with the bridge in the wetlands next year. And then a very large project the time before, which was the West Town Path extension, was an underpass of Gammon Road. That was over a million dollars. But it was the kind of thing where Gammon Road was being done. And if it wasn't done at that time, it was going to be much more expensive. So we have had good luck. So this is kind of the timeline. The applications just became available later in September. Applications due in January. In April, the MPO will select their projects. Any of our projects that were not selected by the MPO would be considered for statewide funding. And then later in the summer, they are announced by the governor of the projects, all the projects that were selected. So just a little bit on the scoring criteria, because that kind of helps you kind of understand what our sort of priorities might be, aren't necessarily the same as the Greater Madison MPO or the state. The MPO does, obviously, they're a regional transportation planning organization. So regional benefit is important to them. But a lot of the points are for newer missing links, network extensions, or barrier eliminations. They also look at population, which is something that we score very well in, because obviously the surrounding communities who are eligible, they do not have the density that we do. They also look at the destinations that are served, congestion mitigation, the safety enhancement. So crash history, safety problems, or other things of that nature are also a good number of points. And they also look at environment. Equity is a big focus for them as well. And then just cost efficiencies, like I said, with the extension under Gammon Road of the West Town Path, much more efficient to be done at the same time as the Gammon Road, as trying to do something like that at a separate time. Now, WISDOT has their own criteria that they consider in project selection. Looking at where it fits with project planning and local support, utility and connectivity, the benefit of the program. And then they do want to consider a geographic distribution of tap funds, since all of the larger metro areas do have some funding that goes just to them. They do try to look at making sure that this isn't something just for the urban areas. So they generally do try to not give all of the rest of their funds to the urban areas. And then project success. And this is kind of a big one. They don't want to see a community that cannot successfully meet the, the deadlines that are required, who have property acquisition issues. So it's very much in your best interest to ensure that you're applying for things that you are going to be able to actually do and that you don't have to turn back the funds. So just a little bit about how we came up with the lists that you saw. So we used the greater Madison MPO's gap work that they're doing on the bike network and looked at the gaps that exist that have been mapped out. Also, they've done a lot to look at the pedestrian network. A lot of gaps, though, kind of overlap. A lot of intersections are big gaps in the pedestrian network, as I'm sure you all know. And then we also looked at our own high injury network to see kind of where there were projects that could be developed or overlapped there. So we came up with, just working on this with just over thirty-five locations. Then we looked at feasibility. Were these actually feasible on those timelines? So were there property acquisition issues that we might not be able to resolve by January? Also logical starting and ending location. That's something that the federal highways does require. So if you have a project and you have three fourths of the property and you think to yourself, well, maybe I'll just build it anyway and get that part done. That is not something that would be acceptable. That has to not be this sort of, oh, it's great. It's an out and back path. It has to be a logical project standing alone by itself. And as I said, you have that four years that you need to be able to accomplish everything. So sometimes a project might be very complex. And if you haven't even started survey work or any sort of basic design, it might just be that four years is not a practical timeline. So we looked at that feasibility and then up here, oh, I put that twice. Well, I meant to put in the second one here, suitability of project. So there's a lot of things to consider, whether a project is really suitable for federal funds as well. One would be the project size. As I mentioned, you can, the project has to be three hundred thousand. But if you do smaller projects, they do include a lot of federal requirements that might make it easier to just do it with local funds. So generally, we like to here at the city do a project that's at least around five hundred thousand, so that the extra sort of resources that are required on a federal project are worth it. You also have to consider if you're tying it to a local project, like a resurfacing, how much work by having the federal requirements are you adding to that whole project? Because you want to use your resources wisely. So we consider those things. Other kinds of right of way issues. So ten years ago, I used to oversee these programs at the DOT. And there were a fair number of projects where the municipality had the, had the land or had the right of way to do it. But there were issues with trees, with parking removal, things like that, that could cause projects to blow up and end up never being built and the funds going back to the state. So those are things that you want to take into consideration, things that might seem like you could feasibly do them today, but can you feasibly ensure that you can do them when the project is actually going to be built? So quite a few things like that, that you try to take into consideration around suitability. Then, of course, you saw the map. We tried, we did an equity review using the Greater Madison MPO's tier one and tier two environmental justice areas, since those will be what they use to review the projects. And then just thinking about, was this definitely a gap extension or barrier that would get funds for that? And was it serving destination so that it would receive points on that? So these are the potential projects that you saw. These were, since it's usually easier to start from some sort of ranking, this is kind of the staff take on the projects that we forwarded on that seemed to definitely be feasible, also to be suitable for this particular funding versus some other funding. And meet some of those requirements such that these would rank competitively. You'll notice that we asterisked the B-cycle expansion. That is something that they have talked to us about, that they're definitely interested in doing. They, however, are a for-profit corporation. Definitely, it's eligible for nonprofits to partner with municipalities to do expansions. But we have still reached out to WISDOT to see if a partnership with B-cycle would meet their requirements. And we have not heard back from them, but we wanted to put it in the mix. Because it definitely would allow an expansion into these tier one equity areas that we have not seen expansion into yet. So these are the projects that were on that spreadsheet. Ideally, we would not apply for all of them. That is a lot of staff time to fill out those applications. When we have generally, in a good year, gotten two projects. So we were thinking that five is kind of around what we typically apply for. That allows some choice, since the criteria is going to differ across the different agencies that select them. And that, that would be an amount that would be sort of a workload that could be taken on between now and January. And then this is the map that you all received as well. And just, I want to go back to this slide and say, all of these projects, we haven't done detailed budgets for them yet, but we've done sort of some preliminary budgeting to try to get a sense for if these are the right sort of price points for projects. So most of these projects, out of these nine infrastructure projects, are in the five to like seven hundred thousand range, which is what we feel like is a good range, both for being worthwhile in terms of the extra effort for a federal project, but also meeting with kind of the typical amount that is funded. Except two sections of the West Town Path are more expensive. The first one, Gammon to Zora Shrine, we think will be a little over a million dollars. And the Zora Shrine to High Point would be more in the nine hundred thousand dollar range, based on what we know about that. Which we know a little bit more about that project, since we have done everything on both sides of that section. So that's just something to also consider. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions about some of these that were not answered in the spreadsheet. And I can leave that up if you would prefer, but can also just take some questions.
Thank you, Renee. Any questions? Comments or other feedback? Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Renee. Question about the B-cycle concepts? I'm guessing that the, the way that's imagined now is, would pretty much be a pass through. And that's what some of the questions are. Is there, are there city expenses that, that typically go into B-cycle expansion projects that we might be able to do instead?
Sure. So for the B-cycle, it would basically be a pass through. We would have a secondary contract with B-cycle where they would pay the federal share. So be that the twenty to forty percent. And then for these projects, the only things that are eligible are actually the equipment, so the bikes and the stations themselves. Any kind of operating expenses have not been eligible. So the question is really just around using the funds and passing them through to a for-profit corporation versus it being a municipality-run bike share or a nonprofit.
Thanks.
And I should say, if we did do an application, we would also expect them to fill it out, not the staff. I mean, we would review it, work with them on locations within the equity areas, but we would expect them to do the work of that.
All right, thank you. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just real quick, I just wanted to say, it looks good to me. Those projects make sense. And just appreciate you having a good long list to submit in there. It's a, it's a good opportunity to get some of these funded. So appreciate the work on it and support the proposed projects. Thank you.
Tom, go ahead.
Just a note that the recently passed Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act increases the tap funding a fair amount. And so having a good long list may be to our benefit, because there's a chance that this funding could increase beyond what the MPO anticipates right now.
Thank you, Tom. All right, if there are no further questions, discussion, or comments, I said, look for recommendation to approve, motion for recommendation to approve. Thank you, Margaret. There's a motion. Second. I think Padraig saw your hand first, so Padraig gets the second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of recommending approval of the Transportation Alternatives Program tap application projects prioritization? Please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, no? Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Our next item then is Legisar six seven five six four Transit Network redesign equity considerations.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm just gonna share screens here. You can't see that. Let me know. We thought that we would bring this as a discussion item in light of just some of the discussions that have been happening around the community, around equity and the transit network redesigns. We thought we'd share some of the information and strategies that we have and have been using and, and see if there's any discussion or, or suggestions or insight into anything more or different that we can do. So BRT and transit network redesign are, are, we're talking about both of those today. So I want to start out with the existing Metro Transit Network. So we have known for quite some time that we have a relatively high travel times, the trip, trip duration and, and transfers. You know, transfers are problematic mainly because of the reliability of making that transfer. But what really matters is, is trip duration and travel time. We've also known for some time that, that low income people and people of color have disproportionately borne the, the burden of high transfer rates and long travel times. Now, some of this can be attributed towards, you know, people with higher incomes have choices in how they make trips. So for example, if their, their trip duration on, on transit is, is, is long and with transfers or double transfers, they would simply use another mode. But I think a big part of this project has been to try to fix this and make, make these disparities less than they, than they currently are. So this has been a fairly major part of this, this project. I think it is within our ability to, to do that. I don't know that we can make them all equal, but we can, we can, we can help this, this problem with, with this project. So it's just kind of a introduction. help this this problem with with this project. So it's just kind of a introduction. So here's here's the existing network. This this measures access to jobs. So you can tell that the number of jobs that you can access in a reasonable amount of travel time with the existing network is significantly better within inside of the transfer points in the the central area of the city. A lot of that is has to do with the transfers at the transfer points, but also we have a lot of the service levels and frequency drop off in the in peripheral Madison. So that's an issue. And as we know, a lot of these low-income communities are in this peripheral outside ring of of development. And so that's leading to what we're why we're seeing those increased transfer rates and travel times. You can kind of see that by this this map showing poverty density. You know, we see pockets of poverty density along the the outer outer ring there. So this is kind of a primer on what we're trying to accomplish with this with this project. BRT versus the Transit Network Redesign, this is, I described it as like a Venn diagram. They're two separate projects. They are closely related to each other. Essentially, BRT redesigns the core couple of routes that make up the backbone of the transit system, and then Transit Network Redesign is a separate project that that redesigns basically every other route. And so they they work together. They're separate projects. We've been investigating BRT since, well, at least like 2012, 2011, but you know, probably really even before that. Transit Network Redesign is newer. We could have done BRT on its own, just as a as its own separate project, and then mainly just kept the the other routes the same. We decided to incorporate the Transit Network Redesign or do it at the same time in order to bring some of the benefits that BRT is bringing to the BRT corridors to the rest of the system, as well as make an effort to not duplicate the the BRT system. And then as we recover from COVID, that's that's sort of a new, a new thing that that's considered as well. So as we design the rest of the network, you know, we could just keep, we could have just kept kept things more or less the same. We we could have done more of a ridership network, which which is fewer routes with higher frequency, or more of a coverage network, which which largely duplicated the existing network, just just done in a different way, or we could have done a blend. And so when we set up the Transit Network Redesign, we'd initially set up these basic three alternatives. We kind of eliminated the first one because it's 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 basically pretty similar to what we have today. So we didn't, we didn't really analyze the net in depth, but we did analyze the two, ridership and coverage. So BRT, we've had consistent public engagement for the last 10 years or so. The overlap in is in them is there are several routes that are, the two of the BRT routes will be implemented with service only, so they won't have the BRT infrastructure. Anyway, so since since the last 10 years or so, we've had a strong level of engagement. We've done kind of the normal stuff in terms of public meetings, which were largely in person up until, you know, a year and a half ago. And then we've also done online surveys. We've done several small focus groups. We've done mobile engagement stations, and we've also interacted with transit riders directly with Intercept surveys. So this is kind of a summary of the mobile engagement stations that we did. So we're trying to go out and reach the the people that that will be affected by these by the BRT project. As we know, when we do the traditional downtown public meeting, we get, we get, we get a group of people that's not often representative of the community. They tend to be less likely to be people of color. They tend to be more likely to be high-income and so forth. And so we we went, we went out and did these mobile engagement stations to try to get a more representative sample of of what what people wanted and how it would affect and let them know how it would affect them. We wanted to reach out directly to the riders, so we did several Intercept surveys. Actually, Tom was instrumental in doing most of these. So I'll give a brief overview, but if, Tom, if you have anything to add, feel free to jump in. You know, we asked them about transfers. Number of riders transferring, the number of riders transferring was more numerous than anticipated, particularly downtown, tending towards people, people of color and low-income people and seniors. This was particularly when we were doing, investigating several routes in the downtown area for BRT. Location of transfers were important for people. There's concern particularly for people with mobility concerns who strongly opposed having transfers be, you know, more than about a block, block apart. And then in regards to the outer loop for transfers, there's even more concern expressed by people with the hills and so forth. We had heard a lot about shelters. People, people want better, better facilities. And then detours, most of them actually did not feel that the detours were that much of a problem. The more of the issue was if they had missed a bus because of a detour or some other event. Safety was a large concern for the people that we talked to. The women that we talked to indicated were more likely to indicate that it was a concern for them. Factors that that they indicated made them feel safe were were things like lighting, pedestrian volume. And then they didn't say too much about motor vehicle traffic, more more about those those other things sidewalk with and pedestrians, pedestrian traffic and so forth. So we also have data that mainly, so we have new, new, new data from the 2020 census that we're looking at. About 30% of Madison's households of color will be within a quarter mile of our BRT system. About 40% will be in, within a half mile of BRT system. And so we're investigating this data that's that's new to to see if there's, there's more that we can learn from this, this, this new data. Most of this before the 2020 census data was out was back from 2010, so it's getting a little bit dated. And then I'll talk a little bit about Transit Network Redesign. So this is, this is, so we, there are three, three phases to the Transit Network Redesign. Phase one was the Choices, Choices Report, which which basically talked about, you know, what the Transit Network does and what it can do for us and what, you know, what we want the direction of the Transit Network Redesign to take. So for that, we did a similar level of engagement. We did a public information meeting, but we also did a survey, an online survey. We did several small group meetings and stakeholder meetings, tabling and Intercept interviews. And and so, you know, one, one thing that we were able to do, particularly with the online surveys, is is take a look at how well the respondents are, were representing the community as a whole. So we asked them questions like age, race, income, and so forth. We didn't get to a complete representation of of low-income people and people of color, but we were able to use some of these strategies, the small group meetings, and particularly the table and Intercept interviews to to increase our our participation by by low-income people and people of color. So we got close. For income, you see a pretty, pretty decent distribution. I think we would have liked to seen, have seen more, more respondents by by lower-income people making less than 50,000. But again, we we kind of tried to target, target and get, get a little bit more of that. It's not perfect, but we were able to get, get a decent mix of, mix of incomes. And then Phase Two is the alternatives activities, the alternatives report. So that's when we talked about the the ridership versus coverage, trade alternatives. So we did basically the same level of outreach. We did a public information meeting, and then we also did tabling and Intercept interviews, small group meetings, and a second online survey to try to get people's input. Some of the key takeaways from that, people generally supported the ridership map with some coverage. So we didn't see full, full endorsement of of the ridership-only map. People did have some concerns about coverage, but we definitely saw people trending in that direction. They asked us to simplify service. They wanted service to be more consistent, more frequent and faster. They also mentioned, and this is all on our, on our website, we have this report in a lot more detail, but I mentioned two, these are two other takeaways that we got, better infrastructure and amenities, and expanded service to suburbs. I have these kind of down at the end and smaller, because they're not really a focus of this project. Infrastructure, things like shelters and so forth are not, are not inherently part of the redesign project, but it's, it's, it's something that we can address. And then service to suburb, particularly Manona and other communities that don't have service or don't have all-day service. Again, you know, that's, that's, that's not, that's not inherently part of this project, and it's subject to the, the, the funding and partnership with those communities to bring that service to, to the people. But I thought I would mention it because it was like, it was something we heard several times. So with Phase Two, looking at the ridership and coverage, we, you know, we, we brought this out, talked, talked about the the ridership alternative, which has fewer routes but are more frequent. And then the the coverage alternative, which would be more like what we have today, which is more routes, putting service in front of more people, but, but with less, less frequent service. And so we asked where we should, where people should be on this spectrum. So when we, we had Jarrett Walker and Associates draw these maps that you have seen, and then we had, we had them analyzed, I thought I would take a slightly deeper dive into how this affects people of color and low-income people. So the existing network is is here on the top. The red bar is people who are people of color, who are within walking distance of service, that is every 15 minutes or better, which is the red. The blue is walking distance of service that's every 30 minutes or better. And then the the light blue is is hourly service. This is midday, of course, not of course, but this is, this is midday. And then this, this 2% is people who have peak-only service, and then 19 is no service. So looking at the ridership network, we, we are, we're increasing the level of, the number of people who of color who are within walking distance of high-quality service. So you see these red and blue bars be expanded, but then this light blue bar actually goes away. And so the overall people do, we do have a loss of of coverage. But the most important thing, I think, that that addresses the, what we've been hearing from people, is that, you know, they have more, they're more likely to have access to faster and more frequent service. The coverage alternative did that as well to some degree, but but not to as large degree. In fact, you're seeing some reduction of people who are within walking distance of of the service every 30 minutes. This 30, this 29% number here is is basically the BRT system is what it is. We also looked at people with access to high-quality transit with low incomes. Pretty similar story here. Again, this, we're seeing an increase in the, basically a doubling of people with access with low incomes if to 15-minute service or better. Now, one thing with with low incomes is a lot of these people are students who live in the downtown area, and that's slightly different than people who live in peripheral, peripheral neighborhoods. We did not ask Jarrett Walker to sort that out. Perhaps should have, but it's, we wanted to kind of keep things as, I guess, as factual and quantitative as possible. People who live downtown but have low incomes are still people with low incomes. But anyway, so we're seeing a similar story of a loss, somewhat of a loss of access in general, but more people have access to higher quality of service. And so this is a, this is a description of what access means. Again, we're talking about how many, how far you can get in a reasonable amount of time, and more importantly, how many jobs you can get to. So people of, people of color will have access to, to significantly more jobs with both, both networks, but particularly in the ridership alternatives, the the number of jobs that you can reach within 45 minutes more than doubles. So the ridership network provides, so this is, this is a graphical depiction of where people are getting, people of color are getting better service. You can see particularly along the BRT corridors, but also the Transit Network Redesign brings, brings more of those benefits to the periphery, particularly in the south and west sides, and also on the north side. The coverage network brings benefits as well, but not nearly as many. So looking between the two, you can see a lot more green on the ridership map than the coverage map. Again, that's because although there's, there's, there's a somewhat increase of of coverage, these people have longer travel times, and so they're not able to access as many jobs as they are under the ridership scenario. People of low incomes will have access to more jobs. So again, low income, the story is pretty much the same, but there's not as much of a difference between existing and ridership, but we're still seeing a significant increase in in jobs reachable within 45 minutes, people of low income. So again, flipping back and forth between these two maps, you can see in the ridership map, we have a much better increase in access to jobs compared to the coverage map. This is what, what people said when we asked them where we should be on the ridership and coverage model. So again, we're seeing, you know, not, not a lot of popularity for extremes, and not many people said you should be neutral, but most people kind of gravitated towards this mostly ridership model. And some wanted more coverage, but that's what we heard mostly was, was kind of this mostly ridership, but there was some, you know, some desire to maintain some coverage. One thing I also forgot to mention, sorry, I'm kind of going back and forth here, but as we, as we refine the network, what we're mainly interested in is these, how we can address this, this reduction in coverage. So when we were given the direction to do the mostly ridership map, but add some coverage where it kind of counts, where it makes sense, this is really what we're looking at. So we're looking at the the low-income and people of color who will lose access with the ridership map and address some of those deficiencies and try to, try to bring that back up as far as we can. And you'll see some of those results in the, in the next month or two. Okay, sorry, getting back on track here. So BRT routing, so just wanted to quickly touch, based on this, there's some discussion at the council meeting and so forth about, you know, how we, how we got where we are with the downtown routing. 2019, we had a handful of specific public information meetings that discussed, primarily, there were two altern, two, two places where we had alternatives. One was the downtown, and one was the west sides. We had several meetings focusing on that. Tom, I see your hands, hands up. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, actually, I just had those slides put in in case there were questions.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure about that.
I was thinking, you don't have to go through all the boxes, because everyone on that board is part of those boxes.
Okay, I, yeah.
There, so that you have that as a reference.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering about that. So I think that, I think that summarizes, summarizes what I have to talk about. Any questions? Margaret, I see your hands, hand is up.
Yeah, as you mentioned, the difference between the census data 2010 versus 2020, as you are assessing the actual impact of the current iterations of possible realignments, will you be using the 2020 data on population distribution by race and by income?
Yeah, we're always Yeah, we're always trying to use the most up to date information that we have. So yeah, in, in, where we can, we'll, we'll replace.
Well, you mentioned in Pat, you mentioned in passing that you were in the process of, you know, comparing the two, because obviously there have been changes in community over the course of a decade.
Absolutely. Yep.
And, and I'm wondering if anything's jumping out at you at this moment in terms of changes in the community.
I haven't, I just, I just started looking at it today. I haven't had, had a chance to, to know enough to comment yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I would say generally if looking at census data over the years, that things generally don't change as much as you, you think they do. You know, everything's kind of two years behind and, and so forth. That's, that's just a general feeling I've, I've had of I've seen new data come out over the years, but, but yeah, no, we're just, we're going to definitely take a look at it and see what, what pops out.
Yeah. Well, I would presume that we're looking at the intermediate data too, right? So the community surveys and whatnot. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, thanks for putting this together. I think it, it does answer many of the questions you've been hearing. Uh, I, I can't help but think though, that it makes a lot more sense to us that have been following it closely and that there's still some, some gaps in understanding more broadly. Um, so I had a couple of observations. One is that I think we've heard sometimes that this coverage versus ridership concept is a false choice. And I, I think we understand why things are framed that way. But I think there's, there's a, a message here that isn't really clear. Which is that by most measurements, both options are an improvement. And I think that's sort of like the whole initiative, the whole reason we, we are doing this study, you know, is to take an old system that was built around earlier assumptions and make it better. Um, and you know, I remember hearing the narrative around, I don't remember whether it was Columbus or whatnot, but you know, like they improve their system without spending any more money, you know? And I think that's, that's part of what we're trying to do here and it hasn't come through necessarily as clearly. The second point, um, on the ridership alternative, like we saw that from the surveys that folks value the ridership options a little bit more. But in my mind, like the ridership option is about a lot more than just ridership, you know? I know Jared Walker doesn't like to predict ridership, but theoretically this is going to give our system a significant boost in ridership. Which is obviously good for metro, but it also like, it helps us meet a lot of our goals around, you know, like traffic, being able to get people downtown every day and lowering the environmental impact. You know, we want to reduce VMT. This is what's going to help us get there. So I think, that's an important point that comes out of this, or maybe it doesn't come out of this yet. And then recognizing that there are some trade offs. And so what we're doing now is trying to minimize the impact of, you know, those service cuts to the folks that it's going, that are either the least likely to be riders or rely the least on, on the system. So I think that's it. Otherwise, um, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. I, I guess I can just respond with, with, uh, with, with opinions, but I think Jared Walker, this is really his, his approach. This is really his style. I agree that I think the coverage versus ridership is a, is a large oversimplification. Transit is a lot more than just, you know, picking where you are on a, on a spectrum of coverage versus ridership. There's, there's a lot more going on. I think part of his strategy is he wants to engage people who are not as engaged as this policy board is. He wants to engage people who are not bus riders and get them, uh, interested in these topics and, and get them to support what we're trying to do. He's trying to, uh, minimize the, uh, the kind of fast negative reactions that you often get from people when you try to reorganize an entire bus system and get people to think, you know, a little bit, a little bit, uh, more in depth about what the bus system is and what they're, what we're trying to do with it. Rather than, you know, just hear that somebody's bus route is being cut and so that we have to react to that. I suspect, I'm, I'm not him, so I don't, I can't say that for sure, but I, I, I feel like that's kind of what we're, what we're doing with this coverage versus ridership debate. That being said, I, I completely agree with you. I, I do think it's, it's something of an oversimplification. And so we are, you know, I, I just want to make sure that, that you're aware of this. There is, there is more than that and we're thinking about more of these things. As we, as we put these networks together. I don't know if that helped at all, but I just thought I'd share that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, we get it. I think there, there's a, a chunk of the, a large chunk of folks that, that just hear this or that and, and hear that simplification.
All right. Thank you. Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thank you. And yeah, and Chris, mine goes to the same place. I feel like, you know, we've, we've seen most of this state already. I mean, so at least for me, certainly it, um, it was a big part of, of why I recommended you moving, going towards the, the ridership side because of some of what was already presented last time. But I think Chris is right that like, how do we, at this point, and as we're preparing to, to bring a draft concept out to the public, how do we appropriately complicate the discussion? So that it doesn't get oversimplified, because I think there is a real risk of that. And so I really appreciate you all bringing this tonight to sort of, you know, recognize that this is going to be a big discussion. I think, um, I mean, to me, those, the, the maps that show the increases and decreases in access across the city is perhaps one of the best visuals to, to really like, that should almost be the starting point, I think, when we're, when we're having this conversation. I think it really shows. I mean, one of the great things is it shows how few people are getting negatively impacted, especially in the, in the ridership model, right? Which to me is awesome, like, because this is a trade off, but it's just so overwhelmingly positive, um, not to say there's no negative. I think when you see it on the, the bar graphs, you know, a couple of things that might be worth trying to tease out. One of them is, you know, sort of the disappearance of the 60 minute service, right? So that's colored like light blue. So it looks like it's, you know, that's, that's an area that we're losing, right? As, as we look at a ridership model, for example. You know, I, folks that use the bus all the time might understand what that, what that means. But that, that might be worth explaining a little bit more or like making that real. Like what does one hour service mean for total trip length, right? I mean, that's, that's what, what would cause it, some of those disparities that you, that you started, you know, your presentation with. And so really maybe making that a little bit more real, like, yeah, what does it mean? That, that's how you get hour and a half and, and, and longer trip times, right? So that's maybe one thing. And then, um, I, I think at the end of the day, the words ridership and coverage, like they are still very like theoretical words and it's, I, I think for whether it's alders or, or neighborhoods or residents, if they're going to, you know, if they're being asked to evaluate this, it's, it is about those trade offs, right? It's some, somebody's winning and somebody's losing. And I think maybe getting that more kind of personal and even showing the, you know, here's a hundred people, in, in this case, a hundred people of color. I think based on that data, right, like five out of a hundred who have very, very poor access today would have no access. So that's like, that's the big negative, right? Of going with the, the ridership model. And then 30 or whatever it was who have, you know, mediocre access would have really great access. And, you know, this many, I, I think almost doing like a, a visual that shows representation of people and showing that, yeah, I mean, there is no, there's no perfect proposal, but I think just more clearly showing how it actually affects our population rather than like, I think when people hear the words ridership and, and coverage, they, they, number one, probably just don't even understand what that's representing if they didn't sit through the full presentation and, and appreciate it. And also it makes it, it feels very impersonal to me. It's more like, well, what are, we're focused more on the city's goals, like, oh, the city wants more ridership, right? Instead of, instead of covering, where in reality, I think we are, we're all focused on how do we meet actual people's transportation needs? And the, whatever we end up voting for and recommending should be the thing that, that does that the best. So I think just maybe, maybe trying to find some way to make that a little bit more personal and a little bit, um, less about sort of like a, a, yeah, city perspective.
Yeah, I, I agree with all that. I think we're going to show more example trips and specific neighborhoods. You know, more of that, like, you, you know, these are the people here that would lose service and these are the people here if you're going there, you know? We, we thought about doing that and we, we kind of did a little bit of it early on, but we kind of shied away from it because we didn't want people to focus on the details of this specific ridership and coverage maps. And for example, you know, turn down the ridership scenario because they didn't want, one specific, well, my neighborhood here doesn't have, isn't on the red line, so I don't like it, that kind of thing. We wanted them to focus more citywide rather, rather than, um, focusing on neighborhoods and, which would give us more flexibility to move the routes around. So as we, as we target a, an actual map, I think we're going to do more of that and I think that will help. I think it'll, uh, it will demonstrate more of that. Um, another thing that I think Jared Walker does well, if you're willing to sit through, uh, the PowerPoint, is describe, as you've kind of described, how bad hourly service and really is and how useless it is to a lot of people. And so people, um, sometimes you'll, you'll hear about, you know, they don't want to walk farther, but they also don't want to wait for an hour either. So, um, you know, we're kind of, we're, we're, we're kind of balancing that out a little, a little bit more, I think. But yeah, I generally agree with, with all of that. Tom, did you have something to add?
Yeah, actually I'm more appreciative of the, uh, comments from, you know, Alder Foster and Chris and then others, because I think much of the public discussion has been inaccurate. And so if it's, if it's been inaccurate, we have to figure out a way to communicate more effectively. Some of the equity considerations. And so maybe, I think perhaps it's been inaccurate because we've presented so much information that it ends up getting lost in all the information that we're presenting. And so if we, we could narrow our, our discussion so that this particular aspect does not get lost in the, in the public communication point. And, and I think, um, you know, you know, Jared Walker has his way and that, but when you have suggestions on how we can communicate better, I appreciate you to, um, feel free to offer those to us.
Yeah, I, I agree. I also think that, I also agree that those maps with the green dots are at showing, um, showing those benefits. So I think we'll, we'll maybe use those a little bit more.
All right. Any further comments, questions or discussion? All right. Thanks to all. And I guess we'll move on to our last item for the evening. Legis 68368, adopting a 2022, uh, meeting format.
Yes, maybe I'll, I'll give a very brief discussion. Um, as you saw in the action summary, council leadership would like every committee to determine or formally adopt their meeting format for 2022, whether it be in person or, um, online or, or virtual. I think if the, the previously, they were going to say, um, everything's going to be virtual unless we hear otherwise. Now I think they want a formal adoption. You know, there are, are benefits to virtual and that all of us are, many of us are sitting at home. And, uh, some ways it may increase access to those who have access to technology. The disadvantage is that it's, um, if you don't have access to technology, it's difficult to get inside our, um,
Thank you, Tom. Alder Furman, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question for Tom. Um, I don't mean to put, put you on the spot, Tom, but, um, I've heard that mentioned, the idea that, uh, people without technology access don't, um, you know, may not be, be able to get in. And I definitely, um, understand that. Um, but are you aware of, uh, the transportation department, um, getting any, any complaints about, um, the inability to access this meeting?
No.
Thank you. I am, I am curious and an important member. I have a, uh, you might be able to tell for my question. I have a preference on what we should be doing, but I am curious and hear, hear what other people's preferences are, uh, for this going forward. Thanks.
I, I, I should maybe one mention too, that they are working on the ability to have hybrid models or something like that, but I, I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have been, have been involved in those discussions. I will say, um, it's, it's very unclear what that means. Because if I ask you what that means, you'll tell me one thing. If I, I explain it, um, I could probably explain it a different way. And so I, what, what has to be done, um, uh, and this has to be done by, by the council, um, is, is a determination of what does hybrid mean? Does that mean all the commissioners are in, all the committee members are in person, but the public's remote? Does that mean some people could be home, but some people could be in person? You know, where, where's those lines? I don't think that's been figured out, but yes, long term, definitely a hybrid is, needs to be defined and would likely be put in place.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Alder Furman. Any further, any questions or question? Any comments, preferences? How do folks feel? I, I would expect that it's been easier for maybe folks to get to some meetings. They might not have been able to make it to, just because they've been able to do it from wherever they are. I know it's been the case for me, um, though it would have probably found a way one way or another, but, uh, Margaret, go ahead.
A comment and then a preference, um, having participated in, now, now the kitty wants to speak it down. Okay. Having been an observer of these transportation meetings for years and then also becoming a member of the commission, I would say, with the exception of very high profile discussions such as, uh, route hearings, um, meetings of that type. The attendance by the public is pretty minimal, uh, at these meetings and, um, probably is enhanced by having them online. Probably, I, I would bet that there's probably more views even pre pandemic, that there were more views of these meetings via city channel. Or, or, or streaming, uh, than there were actual bodies in the seats in the meeting rooms. And then personal preference, um, I'm extremely high risk and I would not attend. At this point, I'm not attending, uh, any large meetings indoors. And I don't anticipate that that's going to change during the winter months, unfortunately.
Thank you, Margaret. Chris, go ahead.
Uh, thanks. I would be in favor of the, the, the body going back to in person when the time is right. But that means when things are safe and when things, we can do things hybrid, because there's a clear accessibility advantage here. Quick, quick question. Do you need a motion?
I believe we will. Yeah. It sounds like we need to actually adopt something formally. So yes. Padraig, go ahead.
Just since we are expressing our opinion, right? So I just wanted to say, with more on work schedules changing a lot lately and I would prefer, my personally, I prefer to be virtual, um, especially our meeting sometimes goes eight o'clock, sometimes nine o'clock. It just fluctuates, right? So if you have a set time, every time, I think I mentioned earlier too, if you have a set time from five to seven, it might be okay, but we fluctuate so much. It is be more flexible if we are sitting at wherever it's our office or from our home. It's easier to have that too for the committee members, not only staff as well. I'd seen a lot of them. Reporting from their house, right? So it's easier for everybody if it's, if you don't have that set time. No, we started right on time, but our end time is actually fluctuates huge. And again, as Margaret brought up too, right? So the public, also not everybody can come in. Transportation issues, again, if they have to stay until nine o'clock too, right? So if it's from their home, I know it's a technology is an issue, but as far as I'd seen, everybody's now on Zooms and Skype for work or personal things for school, right? So everybody is now, uh, whether it's college, school, everybody's on Skypes now, at least for the last year or so. So and that's how I feel. It's again, it's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Badri. Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I'm in agreement with many others as well, a lot of the statements that have been made, I would agree with. I mean, I may be a little further out in Pittsburgh, which is not a great distance, but my day is is full. I need to drive in, commute in during a rush hour and then find parking. And I don't believe COVID is completely over with. I too am at high risk. I would prefer to stay away from large groups, but if necessary, I would. I think the the only part that I'm probably missing from gathering is building relationships. It is a little difficult to build relationships on Zoom. And I found that with the city council as well here in Pittsburgh and other committees. But we do what we have to do during this difficult time, so. But I will, I would prefer to vote for virtual, at least for at least another six months. I mean, hopefully, there's some flexibility. If we vote one way, we we have that option of changing recourse in twenty twenty two. Thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you, Randy. And, you know, of course, the getting downtown and parking are also accessibility issues too, and not only, technology isn't the only accessibility issue, right? Alder Furman, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I I think the the idea behind this is for there to be a a default for twenty twenty two, but I I don't see anything precluding us from changing our default, you know, three, six months, eight months into the year, you know, when when conditions change. So I don't think anybody should feel like whatever we set, you know, can't be changed based on conditions. But I think the the goal is for there to be, you know, a default going into the year and and the other thing that we do have the option of doing is actually making a change. And I think it needs to, I don't know what the notice is, I don't know if Tom knows what the notices, but if there is a particular meeting that we do want to have in person, I do believe as a committee, we can decide with proper notice that we can do that. I don't remember if that was a month or just the previous meeting or something like that.
I believe it was a month. It it it's it's an option. So it's either a month or slightly more than a month so that we can get an I T team, you know. I guess, yeah, because an I T team would have to be with us as well.
In person, yeah.
Person, and so that's occurring next June if things are great next June. Or actually, Jesse is right there.
Yeah, as far as from the I T aspect of that, I I can say that we schedule out our 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 part time staff that would be required for in person, and that's two weeks in advance.
So you really should be planning pretty much the month in advance if you want to do something like that.
Thank you. Since I have four, I'll go ahead and make make a motion that we default the virtual meetings for twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Alder Furman. There's a a motion. I like, I think you see a second by Badri there. Any further discussion? Alder Furman, just speak. Any further to your motion?
Sure, I'll just briefly say, I I I personally believe this this provides greater access to the public and provides additional flexibility to committee members. I think as a council, Alder Foster and I are very, very involved in trying to figure out how to make our meetings more accessible, both for the public and and for committee members, and I'm eager to see changes. And, you know, you guys talk about parking and you know, access and stuff like that. You know, I think we need to make that a lot better for in person, and and we're working as fast as we can. But I think with as COVID's going on and as the fact that we've been doing this fairly successful since March twenty twenty, we should continue. I do want to note people can dial in and people do dial in every so often, so even if you don't have a computer, the phone access is great. And I, at some point, would love to explore, especially if I hear more complaints, on the idea of setting up a computer at the city county building for people who don't have a computer or have internet access, problems to go in and and use that before we rush back for this idea of, you know, people who don't have computers. So lots of things being worked on. But I do think this is the best direction for us with all the facts on the ground at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Furman. As it's been mentioned, it doesn't necessarily preclude us from six months from having a conversation, especially if there's a viable hybrid option, you know, that's been developed and and approved, so. Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion, comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of adopting virtual meeting as our default twenty twenty two meeting format, please admit yourselves and say aye.
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 Pose no. Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a notebook, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will grant us unanimous. Thank you. That's all I have for the evening. So I waited. Thank you, Alder Foster. Is there a second? Alder Furman, thank you. All those in favor of joining the meeting for the evening, please admit yourselves and say aye.
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 Pose no. All right, that appears to be unanimous. We are adjourned. Have a good week.